Pull the big plug out.
Yep, yep, yep.
We have one that is coming off of our agenda. 10.2 is coming off of the agenda. Any other changes to the agenda?
Nope, nope.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with a change?
So much.
Motion by Lindsey, is there a second?
Second.
By Raleigh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Public comments, communications, nobody wants to talk again. Thanks for being here. Wait, I gotta read those names down. Thank you. Sorry about that. Alright, we will move on to the food service report. 6.1.
And that was?
Oh yeah, did anybody have questions on that? She had sent that out?
No, I thought that was an awesome.
Yep, awesome report.
Very thorough report.
Cool.
I appreciate it.
What did I miss about 10-2 here?
10-2, we won't need action from the board.
Oh.
Because we've got a solution without requiring any action.
Okay.
Good news.
Easy now.
Yeah, I thought Chelsea's report was very good. So I appreciate that.
Okay, so then we will move on to 6.2, the board committee reports. See, we just had a personnel meeting before. We talked about a solution that was gone for tonight. We also talked about open enrollment and the growth that we have in our own districts that eventually, that will take care of, our resident units will take place of our open enrollment students. We just talked about where our numbers came in this year compared to last year. I mean, it just sounds like we only talked for five minutes, but we actually did a job for a few today. I'm sorry, so that was it for that? Anything else that you?
No, it's just a good, you know, it's a good discussion about how this whole policy plays itself out and what options. I was telling the committee that, you know, when people look at the open enrollment forms, one thing that, moving forward, which again, we've never had to deal with, but I think practice-wise, moving forward, I know when I get forms for next year after we hit January 15th, people put on the forms the sites that they would like to have their children placed at, but it's still up to the school district to decide the time and place that you do that. And a lot of bigger districts have enrollment designated zones. We've never had that as a school district. I checked with the state. When it became DGF, there wasn't enrollment zones created at the state level. Has never been an issue. However, open enrollment can be treated that way. So when the forms come in, what'll happen is, when I sign off that they're still within the numbers, within the policy, but I will put "to be determined" as far as the site. And so that way, in the same way that people don't find out maybe who their teacher is until August, they won't necessarily find out the site until August. And that's important because that gives us more opportunity to align based on each grade, where you have openings to keep the ratios at the two sites similar. Because that's one of the issues that we were dealing with tonight, as far as with the kindergarten. So I think, I think we do have, I think the policies are good at this point. You know, it's well worth talking about and looking at if we want to make some corrections on the numbers, but at this point, it may not be that is the issue. It may be more where we assign the students to. And again, we'll, we'll give you updates on that as we get into January and so on as those numbers come in. But I think from my point, I just will put "to be determined" on all of them as they come in until we get into the summer. So that will solve some of the issues.
Okay, 6.3, the superintendent report.
So, hand in hand with that, the enrollment, like Sandy and Amy both said, we went through this. This has been emailed out to you in the past anyway, Sir Raleigh.
Got it.
And there wasn't any changes from Friday to today, from what I could see on the site. When we were discussing as a committee about the fact that, when you look at our, in the fourth column over, our ADMs, the actual amount of students enrolled, and where this has played out and why it's so critical that we've got the date stamping as these open enrollment forms come in. At one point in August, we had numbers that were showing our total ADMs K through 12 were 1650s, 1660s. You know, and now you're seeing the 1620s. Because what happens is, when we accept the open enrollments, those come in, they're put into our student information system right away. The problem is, we may not get the transfer requests from the other school districts until mid or later in August. So what ends up happening is then, these numbers get a little bit skewed to the higher points. So then, if you look, for instance, kindergarten, 149, first grade, 142, third grade, 145. As an example, we had a family with two children that happened to be in kindergarten and grade three. And so the phone call I had with the family was the week before school on a Wednesday, and they were closing on their house in Saban on Thursday. And having to call the mom and say, "Your children are going to be on a waiting list." And the discussion with the fact that the realtors told them, you know, "Buy the house and choose the district." And so here, they're signing papers that they're going to be moving and thinking that their kids are automatically going to DGF. And that was a tough conversation to have. Now, in the end, it worked out that first day of school, grade three dropped down to 144, accepted the first one, date stamped already, that brought up to 145, was within the limit, again, priority two, and then priority one limit, 155, which brought in the sibling. So, but this is the stuff that is going on currently, and this is on a daily basis that we are doing this and working with our two elementary sites, and lots of conversations going between the sites. So you can see where, when we talk about the fact that we know that there are subdivisions, there's growth in Dilworth, there's growth in, that we're predicting it's going to happen in both Dilworth and Glendon. But if you look at that fifth column on the open enrollments, that's showing you how much latitude we still have for that growth. Because if you look by grade, there's, at the elementary level, there's averaging in the 40s in each grade. So that's the amount of latitude to be able to shrink the open enrollment down as you have the natural growth of new subdivisions coming into Dilworth and Glendon. So, you know, when we talk about the potential plans and the recommendations from a task force and the fact that, you know, these aren't short-term solutions, they're intermediate solutions that are coming forward. Because, you know, 40, 50 kids per grade growth, that's a lot of housing that will have to take place to make that type of an impact. We've got a few years that this is buying us. So it's, it's a good problem, and it's a nice policy to have, knowing that that can be slowly squeezed over time. It's not denying any residential, because you've got that much latitude. Okay? So I want you to be, you know, having those open enrollment numbers, we decreased the open enrollment by 100 since 2015 because of the policies that we have in place and because of the fact that we've got the boundary adjustment settled for now three of the six on the east end of Dilworth and the longer-term plans in place. The second piece on enrollment, and then whatever questions you have on enrollment, and this is an updated one, you've had this before, it's my Christmas one from the end of the year to the fall. I say Christmas one because it's got those red and greens. Last year is where we had our first time where the, end of the year to the fall, we had a major shift that we had no trend data on, as you can see. So last fall, from the previous end of the year, we had 11 out of our 13 grades that actually decreased in numbers from end of the year in the spring to the fall. So this year, we still had, you know, out of the 13 grades, we had nine of the 13 that, but again, one of them, you automatically, you know you're going to have a decrease because we retain kindergarteners. So that's an automatic. You always will have that. So the numbers retaining, we had a high mark last year, 24 students reduction from the previous spring to going into first grade. So that was, that was a major, that was a major change, going from 151 to 127. This year, we went from 150, let's see, 155 in the spring to 142, and most of that was retention. So there's a drop of 13. So you can predict that that one's going to happen. The other consistent ones that we're starting to see is the transition going from fourth grade to fifth grade. And again, that's the first year that we have the students go over to the Glendon site from elementary, all of the kids go over. And we can, we've seen that now start to take place, that we will see some of the open enrollees going back at the fifth grade level, and then the next one is at the ninth grade level. So when they go to high school. And so you see the drop of eight. So those you can kind of predict, the other ones are kind of hit and miss. They're, you know, you drop, you drop some, but for the most part, you know, you've got those particular years that you can predict, or those grades that you can predict. So we graduated 92 students, we brought in 149. So you would think that there would be 57 increase minus retentions of 13. Okay? So, but in effect, when we ended the year at 1610, we started out the fall with 1627. So again, we do see over the summer, a little bit more consistency of some of that dropping back and forth, more volatility, and some of it is our, our population that is, you know, we are definitely changing our demographics in the FM area. We have definitely a greater EL population that we've seen over the last couple of years. So we have a little bit more of a transient, a little bit more movement throughout the whole FM area. That goes hand in hand with this. So, any questions on enrollment numbers? In general, or any reflection as you, as you've seen this stuff? So we'll continue to monitor the open enrollment, and again, we date stamp them when they come in. We have kindergarten currently, grade three, grade four, those are at limits on open enrollment. And all of them still, none of them have hit the priority one limit, which is 155. So if it ends up being that it's a family, open enrolled, and one of the siblings is in, let's say, grade one, or two, or five, or middle school or high school, then the other siblings go up to priority one, up to that 155 limit. So that's the way the policy is in place at this time. So we have, we have some room. And our ratios, you know, we're, we're dealing with the issue with kindergarten, I think we have a plan for that. Fourth grade, you know, we don't. We, we have classroom spaces at both of the sites through grade three, that was something that was decided last, last spring. But at grade four, you know, you take those sections that we have in grade three, and you move them to grade four, and you've got one less at each site, you're going to transfer those kids into less sections, and they're going to have higher ratios. So until we deal with more of a permanent plan for that, we will, we're going to see that as, as a problem. So. Other things on my list, audit, we're working with the auditors, there are still some issues. Trying to get some accurate numbers, there's some issues with the county on some of our payments, making sure that we, that the receivables are correct. And so they're not ready to give us anything for final numbers. And my hope is that we can get the audit, you know, we've been trying to voice the fact that we want to do the audit. I really would like to do the audit, that first meeting in October. I do not want to go into November. I do not want to have to delay negotiations, just waiting for those numbers, you know, talking money for, for the negotiations. But that audit's pretty important to the board, to have that information before you start looking at some of those major contracts. So there, I know Cindy's been on the phone a few times with them, trying to, trying to get some movement on that. I'm going to give you a copy of, tonight, you're getting just the Cliff Notes version about it. The levy came out, it's public. Anybody can get this on MDE's website, if they know the, where to find it. It's not easy to find if you don't know what you're searching for. Under secured reports, you can go under the financial piece, and then go by district and find it that way. At the next meeting, we will go through, the board needs to approve the levy at the next meeting on the 25th. By law, that has to be done. We have to get to the auditors by October 1st, not, to the county by October 1st. So that, know, know that you will be, we'll have markers and all those fun things on the meeting on the 25th. I have asked Jenna Ledbetter will be helping with this, she's working on a practicum, and to me, this is a, a great practicum to be working on, as far as to have a second set of eyes and also a perspective on getting the information to everyone and answering questions. So Jenna will be working with me on this, so you don't have to just listen to me giving you what lines are important. The page that most people always want to know is page 30. So if you want to look at that one, that's where the rubber meets, gets the road, and that is what our levy proposed when you go max, which, you go max at this time of the year, you can always adjust down. But you don't want to reduce your potential aids. And if you reduce now, you, you cap those, those potentials. So you never want to do it at this time of the year. We can always adjust on things that are not dependent on aid levy mixes. So that's why you want to be careful about not setting these limits too early. So you'll notice, when you, when you look at this, in the middle of the page, you're seeing that there's a decrease of 130,000 or a 5.1% decrease overall. Now, that sounds great, but there are a few factors with this. Remember that, the, why you're seeing the major change, the decreases on the debt service. Notice that that's 161,000. Why there and not the general? Remember, we're in year three of the long-term facility maintenance money coming in. Okay? So this is going from the hundred and some to the 200 and some to the 300 and some per pupil unit. Okay? So you would expect there to be an increase across the board because you're increasing aid and levy. The reason you're seeing a decrease on the debt service is because of the farm bill. Because remember, we get a tax credit on the ag land associated with the debt service. So you're seeing a decrease in the levy, which will be offset by aid. So the school district is not going to see any less money, but the local taxpayers associated with ag land will. You don't see it on the general ed side on Fund One, because on Fund One, you still have that increase. All of, remember, the ag credit is associated with the debt service. It's not going to help out on the general ed, on Fund One. So you're going to see that increase of 38,000 in the general, you're seeing a decrease in the, in the general debt service, Fund Seven. And that's why the overall is dropping 130,000. Now, we know that there's a shift also. If I'm, anybody who is a homeowner is going to see an adjustment, and so when people get those tax statements, those initial ones in November, because if you looked at your green sheets, which showed that your valuation went up on your property, you're going to probably see an increase on the residential side. Okay? So, we'll go through this in more detail at the next meeting. We will, we'll walk through the whole thing, the numbers that are important. The other thing that I wanted you to just be aware of, page one has a lot of the information that sets up so many of the formulas. And those of you who've been through this, have heard this from me a number of times. The most critical lines on this whole page, for most people, is when you look at line 50, on the right-hand column, the 2017-18 adjusted ADMs. Notice it's still an estimate. And then 51, 2018-19, the adjusted. So 51 you'll see in, in most of them, though, that's going to be a biggie, because, you know, you're setting up the levy for the anticipated numbers for next year. You're, you're setting up everything, it's 2017 payable, 2018, so 50 and 51 are real critical. Notice the adjusted ADMs is 1690. And then, so the pupil units, line 56, the difference between these, high school kids, grade seven through 12. So when you look at the enrollment sheet I gave you, and you look at the column on the enrollment sheet that I gave you, and it said, the, the last column, the weighted ADMs, the weighted ADMs is the same, they just keep switching the names, weighted ADMs are the same as adjusted pupil units. So that applies the formula, the 1.2 at the 712 levels. And that's why it's not the amount of kids, high school kids or grade seven through 12, give you more pupil units. So when you look at this year, and we, we run comparisons on the ADMs and then the pupil units, and you're going to say, "Well, God, these numbers are, are different." And they are different. But remember, these numbers that are reported to the state also include your early childhood special ed. These numbers that I gave you on enrollment only include your K-12. So you have more pupil units than what are on these estimates. Now, will we adjust this down? Yes. Because we probably, we set this up for about 16, 1650 initially, 1640 some. So when we get to looking at getting everything done with contracts and what else not, we're going to want to do an update, and I will get you an update based on, now that we have our pupil units, our, our students in, we'll run new what-ifs. Because all of this stuff is created by the what-if, which is, again, from those of you who've gone through this, it is the state's formula on being able to calculate how much you have in aid and levy, and what sets your levy. So, but we'll go through this stuff. The other page, I think that you will want to just mark, and we'll go into more details, on page eight, on the left column, the general ed revenue summary, down at the bottom. That, right there, has a ton of information. That's your summary of all those first pages. So, again, we'll go into more detail next, in two weeks. That's your, my version of Cliff Notes for the night on levy. You okay with that? Or you can call me if you want more info on that beforehand, that night. Some other things. Phase three, four, and four training, did you all get updates from MSBA regarding the dates on that? Because I think it's something we want to make a decision on who may be available. Phase three and four training, for those who are available, October 13th and 14th, it's on their website. And that's something I think we'd want to get reservations for anybody that can attend.
Is that the one that fell in on Monday?
No, that's, that's, that's a different training. This is, this is.
Friday, Saturday.
This is a Friday, Saturday. So it's a, it's a Friday, they're actually both full-day trainings. So it's something either, you know, a person can go down early Friday morning, and then, you know, go to the training all day, and then it's Saturday for another good six hours. So, but take a look at that, and, you know, we've got some, we've got some time, but for sure, by the, by the meeting on the 25th, we've got to get registered if we're going to have people go into that. We've got a visit being planned for Tuesday, September 25th. You may remember that we had Lieutenant Governor come to the high school for a panel discussion.
23, 26?
26 of September, Tuesday, the 26th of December, should be a visit by the commissioner, Minnesota Department of Revenue Commissioner, Cynthia Bowerly. I don't have the details yet, they're working through that, who will be in a panel discussion, but they just asked to reserve the site. So this will be similar to what we did last year, it'll be like a 2:30 in the afternoon, they'll come in. So we'll have, working with Tracy on, on having that, and with Paul Markort, to have that all ready to go. So more on it once I get the details. And right now, the only details are, can we use your facility? Yep. We're working through a contract, Carrie Yates. I know that I, the details are already being, are in place, to dates and what else not, but we just have to get the finalized contract. And Carrie Yates, of course, is a consultant that's been working with our district, and extremely helpful on our literacy initiative at the K-5 level. So we will be doing that contract again this year. Professional development, the whole admin cabinet is, is in final stages for getting dates and times locked in. Basically, every month, we have admin, the full, when I say admin, I'm talking all the principals, assistant principal, the tech director, community ed director, so all of them are working on a monthly basis on some professional development, on the goal-setting, just making sure we have good alignment. And we have Giant Worldwide, some of the ones that are through, the American Association of School Administrators Court, that I'm involved, are doing that with our full admin team. And just very exciting on, on how that's lining up. And update on some of the maintenance projects, 218 to 19, at this site, the soundproof door is being installed, room 150, so when we get done meeting, anybody wants to take some looks around, 150, I think we got 150 is done. I think we got one fifty is done. The last I've heard is, you know, again, will we maybe find something that isn't working just completely, you know? Yes, could be those, those last minute things that you find out. But in general, one fifty's done, one-ten is done, right next door here, one fourteen, the, the one for the middle school, right down the hall. The bathrooms down in that wing, the northeast wing at this site, we know that we have bathroom projects for, over, that are being identified across the board. We, the first, second grade wing, they put new ones, dividers and urinal and such in that one. That was where we had a lot of rust. It was our newest ones, but it was not in good shape. So, that is, that is completed. So, and it looks, it looks really good. The carpeting is, project is done, both at this site, all the entryways over at the Glendon site. They did a real nice, quick job on that one also, and that, that will be very helpful. The scoreboard update, we are latest about an hour ago or so. Joe told me that. We're about two weeks out from having that. So, it's going to be iffy on the second home game or not, homecoming for sure. We got the plans in place in case, you know, they're, they're running tests. There's some of the bulbs that are out on the existing, those are getting fixed. They got Plan B in place if it goes out on us, alerting the other team, you know, just in case we, we lose that. We've got power to the mics, and if we've got to keep track of the clock and up top without using the scoreboard, then they will just relay it down over the loudspeaker, you know, ten, twenty-two left, you know, and such. And they'll just do that play-by-play. So, again, we-
We'll all keep Frank on his toes, huh?
Well, we'll add another person up top automatically. Because it will be a little chaotic. We're hoping that it's not going to be an issue. But again, they've done a nice job getting that ready to go. All of the commitments, donations, we have in, we don't have all the money yet, but we have commitments for fifty thousand dollars. Which is, you know, the, the community, the people came together so well. This was a nice project. So, that's going to pay for itself and more. And that's not including the insurance settlement. And we're working through those details. I think we have, I, we have good, it, it sounds like, but again, I wouldn't want to say automatically how much money we're going to get, because we don't know. But it, we should know within a couple of weeks on the final numbers. So, hopefully by the twenty-fifth. But with that in mind, that, you know, the, the ads are going to pay for that project. I gave Joe the go-ahead to, let's get moving on the wall mats for the wrestling room, because in the first place, that was on the list for this year anyway. And since we know that the scoreboard is paying for itself, there's no reason to hold off on that. So, we're moving on that one. So, I think the capital is, everything's moving, moving forward. So, believe it or not, I think that's. Oh, and locker bases, if you've been up, you know, we shared off the bases on all the lockers at the Dilworth site. We're going to do the same thing over at the Glendon site for, you know, for whatever reason. It's just too tempting for kids, if they can kick in the bases without screwing up getting into their lockers, they're going to kick in the bases. So, we shared out the bases on all the ones upstairs. And it looks a lot nicer, because now they're all the same height. And then, they're putting on the tops, so that every one of them will be the same, it'll be uniform. And then, over at the Glendon site, all those that were put in, in the fifth grade area, those will be taken down at the next break, and they'll shear off those bases. And again, just so that everything's uniform. So, any, any questions? Lots, lots going on. Worldwide.
All right, thank you. Moving on to seven point one, the approval of the August twenty-seventh regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Amy and seconded by Scott. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Moving on to eight point one, the consent agenda under claims and accounts.
Total bills to be approved at this board meeting, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
All right. Extra curricular coaches and advisors, and a donation from the Dilworth local Lions in the amount of five hundred dollars for the snack program. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Amy and Raleigh. End of discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point one, the non-certified contract for Catherine Madsen, food service, fourteen oh six an hour, effective September fifth. I have a motion to approve the contract. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Nine point two, looking for a motion for the non-certified contract for Angela Bjorkin, food service, thirteen ninety-two an hour, effective today. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Nine point three, looking for- confidential employees contracts. We are, nine point three. That's the list right here?
Yep.
Okay. I thought you were handing me the line changes.
Oh, no, no, no. This is on, so, this is the list of all of the people that are officially not part of union negotiations, not in those supervisory roles, and in some cases cannot be involved in, in union business because of the roles that they apply. Those of you who have been on the committee before know that we, I think it was a two, two or three years ago, we've gone through all the regional, went through all these type of positions and checked with regionally to make sure that we have it aligned, to make it marketable at that time. So, moving forward with this, from that point, we've been just trying to make it very standard, okay, three percent increase. The only one on this whole thing that doesn't have a three percent increase is Austin Kennedy. And that was just very underrepresented. That's the one we needed to have a correction on. There hadn't been any adjustment done in, over two years on his, because he was being, you know, he was still going through as a student. So, when we compare to any of the other places, I had asked Jake, our tech, to, okay, get us some numbers on what we're seeing from any of the other places. And this is going to put us, moving it to there, to that amount, the thirteen seventy-five, is going to put us right in the middle of like where Barnesville and some of these others, I mean, it's, we're not even close to the FM. But at least, it's a, it's a good adjustment for a one-year. And again, there's limits on the amount of hours that he can work. Like during the school year, it's, it's about twenty hours a week, you know, as he can do with his classes. But, you know, Austin's been a, a great addition to help in when, I think it's taking a lot of pressure off the rest of our team, just having that, you know, can you work a few extra hours this week? But it's an average of about twenty. During the summer, he's put in a few extra hours, but we're getting very good bang for the buck. I've met with, again, some of these you've already approved, we know that Maintenance Department, Rick, Tammy, and Ryan, those were already approved by the board over the summer. So, the ones that were left were District Office Staff, and then Eileen, and then Chelsea, Beth, Darla Henon. Like I said, I, I've, I've sat down and individually with each of the people, just, the only other adjustment was that we had two people that moved from having the ten days to fifteen days of vacation because of the amount of time they've been here now. And that was with Brant Mickelson and with Brooke. So, that's, that's really the only other changes with it.
Are these numbers swapped here? Because she goes down. Is that a typo? Was that flipped or is that correct?
Well, it's, it's coming from Jeannie, so I, I, I hope for her sake, it's got to be flipped. So, we'll have to-
I just wasn't noticing that.
We're going to give Jeannie grief on that one. Tell her, evidently you didn't want to raise, Jeannie. Yes, I'm sure it is.
She's such a giving person.
Yeah, there's a couple of them.
So, we, we will, it's supposed to be a three percent increase.
That's what I thought. I was just-
So, I will, we will, we'll have her double-check. I mean, she's, I mean, she's a, taking one for the team, but not to that extent.
Okay. So, can we approve the three percent increase, and then the, the changes will be made on that?
Yeah, fix it.
We'll fix it, and we'll get you copies of it.
So, motion by Scott with a three percent increase.
Second.
Second, Lindsay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Lane changes.
And the lane changes that were sent out. And we go through, and we, we have everybody turn in their transcripts for that. It's nice to see everybody doing what's needed, taking some advanced coursework.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point five, the facilities expansion discussion. Just asking, any questions that need to be, any information gathering?
Yeah, because, you know, we're at that point where, you know, if you go back to what the board originally, I, I guess what I'm looking for is direction on what else do you want and need moving forward to be able to take that next step moving forward? You know, back over a year ago plus, we, the, the board authorized a task force with making sure that we had stakeholder input from all of our different entities, parents, empty nesters, staff members, you know, business from different factions, with the idea of, okay, bring something forward, which they did. They went through six-month process, and then we brought that back. We knew that there was factors. We wanted to make sure that, you know, some of the things that, back then, just to give a little, on the history, making sure that it's very transparent. All of that data, all that information is still on the website. The videos, the, the handouts, you know, we've got stuff there that anybody can go to. So, we have the stakeholders, we've, we've, that information's out there. We wanted to make sure that we got the boundary adjustment done. That's taken care of. And then, the ag bill. So, you know, those were three of the big factors. And it was interesting, I, I called MSBA, talked to Greg Abbott about this, and, and, you know, MSBA coming out and, and leading something. And I, I said, what can you tell me to bring back to the board as far as what MSBA could offer? And Greg said, you know, basically, what we would do is go through the timelines with you, knowing that if you're looking at, here's the restrictions now, and you got these five dates, and here's where you have to, like Greg said, you know, to be honest with you, that, you typically, whoever's your financial advisor gives you that data, which we've always had. We get that as far as the timelines. Now, the PowerPoint that we already went through with the board had some of that information anyway, as far as there's the five dates that can be done. So, that was one of the pieces that Greg said. He said, typically, you get a task force, we would talk about those things that you can do. He said, if you've already done the task force, and you, then you have the task force come back and, and bring their recommendations, if you have done that. He said, another thing a lot of districts do, and we talk about that, we, we, we come out and we give you, here's the things that we've found successful. He said, another one is, a lot of places will have Ellers or Springstead do a community survey. I said, well, we did that. He said, well, then, he said, you go back to what you initially authorized your task force to. And if they've done that, now you as a board, because the board authorized it, and now it's the board's decision what you do next moving on. Are you going to come to, moving to, get a timeline? Get a timeline, figure out how much money, and then move it forward. So, what I need to know is, to help with this process, what type of data do you want me to bring forward? What do you need or want for the twenty-fifth, so you can have, if there's anything in advance of the twenty-fifth, that I can get to you as board members in preparation to have a discussion about what you do next?
So, are you talking about having a work group session on the twenty-fifth after school board meeting?
I think you take, however you want to, if you want to lay it out with a, with a work session in the middle of it, and then be able to come back. So, you, you go into a work session, and then you can actually, so you take, because you keep it as part of, it's a meeting.
Right.
It's a public meeting. So, you just go in as that topic, that you're going to go into that, and you're going to set a time limit for it, and then just decide, are we ready to move forward, or are we tabling any decision on this until the next meeting? But that allows you to take action. If you go in and do a public meeting, and then you finish your meeting, and then go into work session, then you can't take any action that night.
Well, I think since January, we've, I mean, I personally have been asking for a work group session with the school board, the full board, to sit down and talk this over, and we haven't had that opportunity. So, I would like to see that happen before we take any action on anything.
So, and, and I think, you know, some of the confusion is, because, you know, even talking to Greg, back in June and July, there was a work session just, you know, bringing in the recommendations, bringing in the, the different, whether it be the construction management, people to request and such, just with all of that to review in a PowerPoint. And, I mean, when I talked to Greg, and I said, here's what we did, and that's really what they would do in a work session. So, having just a night where, you know, if it takes an hour and a half just to talk about it, and then, but staying in the meeting so that you're not done with action items, where you can still deal with an action item yet that night, if you so choose, then you're not delaying it more weeks.
Working at a school and being through these, it, to me, it's not, there's not a lot of confusing parts to it, but I could see where it is, because sometimes schools, like government, work a little bit backwards. So, in my mind, what we're voting for is, is a number in beginning the process. So, there's really no plan. So, what I would like to see, you know, by that, Brian, would be, okay, if we approve twenty, whatever the three million that was brought forth, what then happens, I think, is what people are looking at? Because we're not approving a plan. We're approving-
Taking the recommendation.
Recommendation of number. So, the drawings that we had, you know, maybe putting that down, for example, what is, how is staff going to be affected by? What, what individuals will be working with the architects? Because I don't think that's really necessarily a board job. You know, maybe we'll have input on it. But, you know, having administrators, staff, looking at some of the needs. You know, we talked about, you know, that, the staff putting together kind of a list of needs that they foresee. So, maybe identifying what will all happen. Not saying like it's going to become a big wish list. We know it's, there's not a lot of monies for a wish list. But then, is there going to be a, a task force of staff that is going to help make those decisions? So, I think for the people, you know, that haven't been through this, maybe identifying, okay, if this does go through, how is this going to happen, so we know that we're not wasting money? Because as a board, I think we would be the least likely to make a good decision on what the school needs, because we're only here a couple of days, you know, a week at most, if that kind of makes sense.
To me, it does.
Yeah, to me, it does.
Yeah, like what, what's that, what would happen afterwards?
So, if, so if, so if I'm hearing- So if, so if, so if I'm hearing, so would one of the recommendations to bring forward to that meeting, in advance of that meeting is, here is some templates that were done, whether it be Fargo and what else not. Now that they've, because when you think back to the, I know in the conversations I've had with Terry, you take these preliminary things, which has been done. Okay, so you take the preliminary ideas, and then when you're getting serious about, hey, you know what, we're focusing on looking at, here's, here's our tolerance, you know, we've asked the, the community, where is that tolerance? And, and in general, the, the task force is saying, about a twenty-three million dollar project. Okay, so who's gonna then take over from that point? And who are the stakeholders that need to be involved in starting to fine tune, here's the plan, here's a timeline, when they're gonna bring it forward? And here's how you're gonna have staff members, here's how Fargo, here's how Morehead, here's all the different ones, and here's some templates. And then we bring that forward to you on that night, and what makes sense for you moving forward to make this happen. Will that be helpful if I get from some of these different schools what they did from this stage to have the board take, okay, action item, then, cause then you can feel confident that, okay, we're gonna support putting this in place with the idea that they're gonna bring us back for a twenty-three million. Here, we're setting this limit at this point, unless they come back and tell us, we can't give you a good one unless we have at least twenty-five. But then they'd have to come back with that as a recommendation. And otherwise, it's twenty-three million, and here's the tax impact.
Right.
And...
And it, and it might be less too.
Exactly.
Let's not...
But I mean, you, you, you put some parameters for them to work with as far as the top number. So they don't all of a sudden come in, well, we need forty thousand, cause we think this is a better, no, you don't have forty, or forty million. You don't have that.
I think being a new board member, I would just like to know how the process, just be able to have a work session, how did you determine your contract man, your management company? How did you determine your architect? You know, all these different things. And then I personally, we, we know that we have facility maintenance, we know our boilers, we know, like, I'd like to see it broke down like, okay, here's the stuff we absolutely have to do.
Well, we have that.
Do we have that? Have we seen that?
Do you have a report yet, Brett?
Do you know what I mean, like with the boilers and...
Well, we definitely, you definitely have that.
Each bag.
You definitely have all that in, in your deferred maintenance, because you got that directly from engineers.
That's what we, cause the architect, we don't have an architect right now.
Correct.
We, we wouldn't even, to approve this, we would have to interview architect firms. So we have none.
Correct.
The only thing we have right now is Carl Sanderson is donating their time.
Right.
Therefore, that's why we don't have an architect. If we had an architect, they would charge money.
And, and really, until you know what you're thinking about, you know, how many square feet and where you're putting it and all that, you don't need one yet.
Yeah.
Because you, I mean, you really don't know, we haven't decided on how many square feet you're putting at either of the sites. Then you're gonna want to get some, but at this point, you gotta, you know, we need to bring some people together to start, okay, within the parameters.
Yeah.
So if, you know, what'll help me is knowing, what do you want me to get to you, for you that night? You know, if I get, okay, here's what Morehead did, here's what Fargo, here's some recommendations on process moving forward, because now...
What did Morehead do different than, than we did? They had a, you know, they had project managers, or do they hire architects, or what did they do?
Well, and to get the chicken and the egg part, because some will go with architects first and, and have the architects leading, no different than you think when you did the JCI.
GMC.
GMC, JCI.
GMC.
You know, they were, they were in charge of the whole thing, and then they, they bid, and they also, they were the construction management, but then they, they actually had their own people doing some of the jobs. So, you know, that's a little, it's another story. You don't have that separation. Like auditors would tell us, we don't have a, a separation of duties. We get written up every time, you know, through audits about that based on our size. So, you, you, Morehead, you know, Morehead, one thing that they did, and again, there's, it's gonna vary on the size of the district, you know, they had, there's certain ones that will bring in somebody like the Cunningham Group, and we're gonna spend some pretty good bucks on the planning side of it. And it may be five or six figures to do that, and most won't do that.
That's a double-edged sword, and unfortunately, you know, I think it's a, it's a tough deal, you know, if we bring in architects, we're gonna drop fifty, sixty thousand dollars, and then we don't even, we can choose not to vote on it. But then, you know, unfortunately, we had Carl Sanderson, they were doing that for free, so their drawings were a little bit crude, but it was nothing more than a representation of size and a possibility. I think they could've penciled out ten other options.
Like they were just giving us how much...
But I, I think that at that meeting might've done more harm than good, because people were talking, well, I don't like this plan. Well, it was, it's a dollar amount and it's square footage. What, what square footage buys you?
And, and so you get those estimates, and that's what they're, you know, that's why you're getting just estimates. We, we know that if it's new construction, it's two hundred and some dollars per square foot, you know, it's, it's that stuff that you're gonna get in general from, from them, because it's, it's all gonna come down to when you do it, and the time of the year, and how busy your area is, and if, you know, the closer you are, if the oil is booming, and look at how that affects things on North Dakota. I mean, you could see a inflationary change. So they'll just give those estimates based on the economy at that point. But I guess if, if you want, you know, a few different, you know, if you talk to Phil over at Holly and comparison, you know, you know the scope of the project, you identify the scope of the project, and then you hire architects based on the scope of your project. And that's kinda where, you know, if we can get to the point, what's the scope of the project here? And then you can determine what you're gonna need after that with the architects.
And that, that's where I was saying, you know, if, if you can give us a map of how it's gonna work, because I'm not even interested personally, this is just me personally, and, you know, I'm only one of, you know, six or seven. I want specifically, like, I don't want staff to do anything unless we're gonna, we know we'll do the twenty-three million moving forward, but then, when we do that, in my mind, I'm just thinking aloud, it would still no architects. I don't wanna spend that money until we can come up with a plan. At that point, we know specifically, whether it's stakeholders, whether we pulled a, you know, a bunch of those task force members back, or whoever wants to come back. You have staff, you have administrators, you know, a couple of board representation. Once that happens and, and certain concepts or ideas are developed, then I'd want, you know, maybe some captains off to meet with the architects as they presented, cause then the architects will come, they'll talk about what they do, they'll show the beautiful buildings they built, and then you'll find the ones that do a lot of remodeling, and maybe those will be the individuals that we'll look for. That's, that's in my head what I thought would be good, cause then we're not, we're not wasting money if we can't come to a plan.
And I think, I think you have, you know, when you look at your district goals, when you look at your site goals, you've got high school, middle school, that's, that has set college and career readiness as a major goal for World's Best Workforce, associated six, twelve. Well, part of that will be that they'll be looking at, okay, what are the, and one of their goals, if you look at our, our, our charts, everything that came out of the sites, is identifying the particular facility needs to be able to do the college and career readiness setting up for the future years. So, you know, that's why we've got that structure going on now, moving forward, as far as having both the instructional side and the operations side, and that should go hand in hand with the work that they're doing. They just need, we, we just need the board to say, yeah, we're giving you authorization to give these recommendations based on, here's the dollar amounts to work within. Because otherwise, it's gonna be really difficult to come to staff and say, start putting together some plans, and then, you know, when we're sitting at meetings going, well, Mr. Tigerson, you know, what does this mean? When are we, you know, are we doing anything, are we doing all this or not? And that's gonna be very low motivation unless everybody knows that, yeah, here's your timeline, give these recommendations, by this point, we're gonna bring this back to the board, and then the board will go thumbs up, yep, we're gonna run this. Because the board should be, you know, looking at, okay, at what point then with these timelines, are we gonna look at an August one if things move forward? Are we gonna look in May, are we gonna look in August? We're gonna look in November of, of eighteenth? Because you guys will need to know that based on all these, these timelines. And they're gonna need to know how much time they've got to be able to give recommendations to work with it. So, you can think about it a little bit, if there's things though that you know you want me over the next two weeks to be checking in with these different ones. It's very easy for me to get information from Alex, from Moreheads of the world, I'm sure you can get some of this stuff, I can get from Fargo also, as far as here's what we did from this point.
Can you talk to Pelican Rapids and see what, what stages they went through?
Oh, absolutely. Deb's all...
I just, every time I walk into their building, I look at something, you know, they were able to create and re-figure and make a nice facility, and I think sometimes we're focusing so much on Alexandria and Morehead and the big glossy, glass ceiling buildings that aren't gonna probably happen here. So, it'd be nice to talk...
Not that Pelican isn't really nice.
No, it's Pelican's beautiful. It's beautiful, but it's a remodeled, it's a re, you know, restructured space. I think that they would have some good insight of what they feel went well, what didn't go well, and maybe they could give us some guidance.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and, and, and there's, there's no doubt we can, I'll, I'll talk to Deb, Deb is, you know, retired now, but, you know, I bring up Morehead because part of Morehead's work is not just new buildings, it's, okay, with our existing buildings, reconfiguring existing buildings for what they're gonna have a new aspect for. So they, I mean, they had to do some, some gutting and, and repurposing like crazy also, so, but it, it's, again, scope of the project.
Yeah.
And so, you know, but I'll, I'll get ahold of Deb and now that hopefully she's enjoying a little bit of retirement and get some stuff from her and find out who they worked with.
I think we all recognize when we look at the enrollment issue, is that, you know, the, those kindergarten through fifth grade students are coming to the high school, and we need to look and make sure that we have sufficient space to provide World's Best Workforce, because that's our obligation, so, you know, we know we need to do something.
The one thing I'll say, we had a, a pretty big thing this summer where we had a construction project out of my department, and surprisingly enough, you know, even though we're a larger district, they're very, I think systematic in how they do things, so sometimes larger is, is not a bad thing, even though it, because they're, they have, I think, quite a few different things sometimes in place. But when it comes to your particular area, you know, like for us, and that's why I was saying stuff about the staff that I work in there every day, they ask me what I wanted, you know, in my department, not, you know, the, the, those individuals, what specifically do you need to be effective at your job? And, you know, of course, I'm, I'm the head of my department, so, but it mostly affect the engineering teachers, so what do I do? I bring him in and, and we have a good discussion, and then, then it gets done, but, you know, I think the, the staff here has what's, you know, best in mind for their, their, their students and how to be most, most, most effective, so.
Well, and, and that goes, you know, I was telling Amy and Sandy earlier that, you know, when we were going through the, and Raleigh was, was there when we were talking to Pat over in the science department, and, you know, the fact of what we've got coming. You know, we know that we got more kids coming in, we're gonna be seeing that, that change in the amount of sections at the high school level. And when we, when we have goals set up at the district level and at the site levels at high school for college and career readiness, and we know that we have some, some instruction in departments that we're gonna have retirements, and we're gonna lose a lot of, a, a, a lot of talent that, and lots of years of experience. And, you know, talking to Pat about just even all of the probes and what else down in the science department, and when, when you have certain probes that are still utilizing Windows XP, it's like, okay, you know, thank God he knows how to operate it, but you hire somebody brand new coming in when he's ready to retire, and they're not gonna be able to do it. And we're gonna have to be replacing all of that. So we need this year of each department looking at what they have for capital equipment and what will need to be transitioned as we look at the next five years. So it is good time to be able to get into some of this stuff and get that directly from the departments as they're going, because you look at your enrollment, we got two grades left under a hundred, and then everything from that point is a hundred and some coming into the high school. And so we're gonna need more staff in each of those core areas, and in our electives, and what will the electives look like to meet those twenty-first century skills? So, be a good, be some good planning time.
I guess I would ask Sandy if you could, if we could that evening at least break off for an hour and have a work session and just may have some discussion, so we can all think about it for two weeks and come back with our questions and concerns and go from there. I feel that would be helpful, just to have some discussion. Or beforehand, I mean, I kinda was under the assumption when we left the work session or last time that we were gonna try to get together on the eighteenth, that Monday, that date had been thrown out there, so if you wanna look at your schedule and talk to Brian and...
Yeah, I was under the impression as well as that we were gonna make an effort to do a work group meeting on the eighteenth. So I will do my, I'll commit to getting my questions on...
Do you, do you still want a work session on the eighteenth and, and then do action on the twenty-fifth, or, again, we don't have anything with MSBA, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that would work.
Would you have enough time to gather that information?
Yeah, now that we get through the kindergarten stuff without having to go, yeah, well, it'll just be the pri, it'll be at the top of a priority.
We were gonna be...
I'll try not to hit alarms off at this site too many times.
Yeah, I'm fine.
It'll be, email me, email me stuff that you would like to have ready for the eighteen.
My boys will play, so like after I...
If you've got different...
I agree.
People that you know, that like, you know, relatives, what else not, that, God, it seems like so-and-so had a really good process at this particular school and what else not, get me the names, and we'll just be in correspondence with them.
Six p.m.?
Six p.m. on the eighteen?
Six p.m. on the eighteen.
Can we push it back a little bit? We have a football game and we left early today.
So, seven?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Is that okay?
If, if it's, yeah, it'd be nice to get...
It's possible, cause we had the liberty today.
Then I can actually eat since I have...
Yeah. And then we won't worry about plans for subs and what else, that we'll just come in at seven o'clock and get right to work.
Do we wanna do any, like, limit the time or anything?
Seven to nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Max. Can we all start emailing, like, questions and just, can you do like a, a rolling tab and email amounts, or at least we know what questions are?
I'll put it into a Google one that I'll just, I'll just share now. This is not associated with an action item.
Right.
So this is not gonna break that as an issue, and what we'll do is we'll just put that into it. And what I'll probably do is, again, because we're talking about just what resources we're gonna bring forward, I'll most likely just, I'll, I'll talk to MSBA to make sure of what we wanna keep public through that, if we need to. But we'll bring it all there that night. So I just don't wanna run into a, a running meeting issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to ten point one, the non-certified contract for Rachel Gilbert, paraprofessional fifteen oh three an hour, effective September thirteenth.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Looking on to board future agenda items. First one, of course, would be then, next Monday night, the work group meeting, seven to nine, and this site.
Where do you want it at? What would be...
Where's the football game at?
It's in Glendon.
Then we'll do it in Glendon.
Then we'll have, that way if there's any resource that we wanna bring up on the TV screen, I can also do that.
So we'll have that in Glendon.
And do an update just on the kindergarten situation, since it's not an action item and I...
Yeah.
So the story is that we are able, we've had some discussions today, it was actually around noon or so, Christie had emailed me about her position and her background and her... It was actually around noon or so, uh, Christie had emailed me about, um, her position and her background and her love of kids, and what else not, and, and the fact that, uh, you know, this would be an easiest transition. Uh, Margot and I and Christie, we've had some conversations about the fact that to, for the interest, the best interests of kids and, and families, we can do this, put the third section of kindergarten in place, and have a pretty quick turnaround, because we, we have a lot of the, we've had three sections kindergarten before. Um, this would be moving the title people over to the computer lab. Um, Christie would be moving, uh, out of the literacy position, directly into the kindergarten position. So that's why there'd be no need for board action, because we're just taking our existing FTEs and just realigning our FTEs. And so it has a direct effect for kids to be able to have the three sections, get the lower ratios. And the fact, you know, we're talking about somebody who's definitely done that, bringing a lot of, of passion for kids, and has done a great job, I think. Uh, I could speak from, I, I haven't had one person that has talked to me, uh, having anything but positive things, talk about her role as a literacy, uh, coach. And I know she spent some time this summer at a conference, and before she was even back, she was, uh, sending correspondence back about how positive an experience it, it, it was. So she's gonna bring that wealth directly back to the site levels. Um, so I, I think it's a great, uh, it's a great option to make this work very flu, make it work very quickly, have it in place for kids without having to all of a sudden, you know, having to wait three, four weeks, and, and have a particular teacher that they're used to, and, and all of a sudden trying to figure a lottery system on who's gonna be moved out, and, and what else not. So we've got the three rooms right there, they, I, I think it'll work very well. Um, any concerns in particular, or transition plans that you, that you can think of, Margot, as far as making this happen?
Well, we've already had Jake in to check out how the rooms are gonna technology-wise facilitate, said that's not even an issue. Um, the, the other kindergarten room has a smart board and projector. We've got, I, I went to the storage shed with Tammy today, we've gotten more than we thought initially when, when we had brought this up. Um, some of the big expenditure items, like the rug, we've got a teacher's desk and everything ready for it. So we've got it, we've got it pretty well drawn out. So there's just a, there's just gonna be a few of those classroom skeleton expenditures, but I don't think it's gonna be very much. But, I mean, and I have complete faith and trust in her with the kindergarten team. I mean, and again, it's best for kids, for individualized instruction and learning, so I think it's gonna be great. And I actually, I think we're, we're pretty set with our plans.
I, you know, I, I think it's important for people to know that if it means, because we don't have the same resources for the literacy coach, you know, if, if this means that we actually negotiate a little bit more time for Carrie Yates as, as she's working with the K five, we negotiate more time, if there's more time that's needed. Uh, the big push this year with Carrie's time was gonna be working directly with the administrative team on the walkthroughs, I believe, at the, with, with the classroom walkthroughs. So, and, and Margot brings a wealth of knowledge also on, on the literacy side, which just goes hand in hand with the work that we're doing. So I, you know, I, I think we have, um, some nice pieces in place. Um, I, we've had lots of discussions over the time, the last few years, about the need, you know, and this may be a transition. Um, one of the committees that we've, we know that as we're doing this restructuring is, and as we've looked at the policies that we have, is the idea that we, um, look at our curriculum and the coordination, the alignment of that curriculum. Um, and, and we're getting to that point of making a decision, you know, do we look at advocating, um, so that we, um, look down the road here, over the course of this next year, to put in some type of, uh, district-wide alignment position? Um, you know, people look at, years ago, the, the curriculum coordinator. But really, you know, whether it's, you're talking about system improvement work, I mean, like Missy Idzen's position at Morehead is, is that type of position, uh, where you're looking at the assessment, uh, taking over that component, the alignment, so that you start, if we're looking at, um, district-wide alignment, like with the, with the language arts, we had a six twelve, we had the K five. But now, as we look at the math, to make sure that we have that alignment in the math as we're looking at curriculum, to have somebody taking that lead with it. Um, and, you know, I do believe that there's a, we, we have the TMT in place, you know, so we have that mentorship component. But, you know, so now we, we need to have that administrative oversight with it. So, uh, you know, I think there'll be, uh, some good discussion over the course of, of the next few months about, you know, is this the transition to have that district-wide type of position, K twelve? Um, six twelve definitely has, um, you know, if we're truly looking at the college and career readiness, there should be some oversight about looking at that component of it. Um, what type of courses, what type of, you know, the department's looking at, whether it be their equipment, whether it be looking at their curriculum. We should be having those discussions, and it takes somebody taking the lead with, with that. So, no territorial things, it's just alignment. So be, be aware that I think this is the time, we'll have a, some good discussions coming this year about it.
So back to one of the original questions, when for kindergarten? Putting work gloves on this weekend, or?
I think with knowing that we can transition this, um, I, I believe that we can have this in place, um, by Monday. I'd be shocked if we couldn't have this in place by Monday, what are your guys' thoughts?
As long as, you know, there, like she said, there's room for Tricia and Gwen and the title space, and I'm very familiar with curriculum, obviously. That's what I've been doing for the last year, and I've had kindergarten for many years, so.
So maintenance-
So give me some furniture and tell me which kids are coming.
Maintenance staff will be available to hit her this weekend, and all that kinda stuff for-
We, we've been, we started having those discussions last week, as soon as, Wednesday is when I think I had my first email about the numbers, either Tuesday or Wednesday, that we were hitting that forty-seven, forty-eight, and then all of a sudden, it was like, you know, it was the flood stage at fifty. And, and so this has been going on for a, a little while, as far as, uh, you know, so-
Jake will be available to help with that stuff?
Yeah, we've, we've been, like Margot said, we've had Jake, we've had Tammy, we've had a few different ones involved since early last week, having discussions about, and the good thing is, we've got so much of the, a lot of it is just ripping out things out of the room. And, and, you know, if we can get the title people over so that they've got a manageable space to start with, um, it's, it's gonna be a matter of, um, you know, one night moving stuff, get the right people maintenance-wise to move stuff. So, um-
And the meantime, to our title, people are not opposed to doing some pushing and working right in the classroom with the classroom teacher. They're not doing direct pull-out services yet, testing is still going on, we're still getting initial, beginning of your data, so.
So.
So we can basically pull a trigger tonight?
If the board, that's exactly what we need, we need the board, there, there's nothing really the board needs.
It's not an action item.
Now there is no action item, it's just that, you know, if everybody, because really the only way, there would've been action if you said, no, let's just hire another person and keep Christie, that would float on the process.
Yes.
But this is definitely the quickest transition, because it allows us not to have to worry about waiting on this for a new person coming in.
Right.
So, uh, this, if, if, if everybody's comfortable with this, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with the people that we've got working directly with this, let's just move on it.
Thanks for switching gears, Christie, appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm very, I'm very, ideas, and Brian's always been very, um, good to hear my concerns or ideas, or whether they're off the wall or not, so.
She came with the email, and I tell you, I, I called and said, uh, let's talk. And she was over within about twenty minutes.
Awesome.
So, yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
She'll have fun.
So then again, the work group is the eighteenth. We will have an operations meeting Monday, the twenty-sixth, at Dworth, followed by a-
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Is that off on that thing?
No.
Oh.
Um, at five o'clock is the operations on the twenty-fifth, followed by a board meeting at six o'clock. We'll be talking about the tax levy in detail at that meeting.
Yes, we will.
Um, just a clarification, MSBA sent out the notes from our work session that we had. Um, I know that at the last meeting, I had brought up that it was also a recommendation from MSBA that could give the board the authority to appoint, and a couple of you did not hear that recommendation, and you can see that it is noted in their papers, that that truly was a recommendation from MSBA. So I just wanted to clarify that. Anything else?
Email me what stuff you want me to, want me to grab, folks, and I will make that a priority for next week.
Anything else?
I've got, uh, MSBA tomorrow night, they got rid of the Fergus meeting, um, so the only one in the region is at Thief River. So I'm gonna do a down and back tomorrow night for that.
And that's just the, for superintendents?
No, no, anybody wants to, uh, it's, it's MSBA's regional one, it's on their website.
Oh.
Um, basically what they do is, at that meeting, they look to go over if there's any platform issues that people want to bring forward.
As it stands.
No, this, this is, uh, MSBA's reg, that's tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and, and again, so much of that is just looking at platform. But, so, but I will, when I'm having conversations up there, that will also allow me to check with some other districts that are up there, as far as, give me any of your M lines that you went through.
Meeting adjourned, seven twenty-two.